I just wanted to have a conversation and kind of let everyone know kind of where we are. With our garbage truck, with our garbage collection. I'm invited, our sanitation supervisor here, Mr. Wayne Pete, along with Mr. Dishman that drives our truck. From time to time and if, if, if you are familiar, we budgeted in the twenty twenty-one budget year. Two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to purchase a, a, a new garbage truck. What we call a back loader, what the back loader is, is with two folks on the back, obviously, putting garbage in the back of the truck. Well, in a year and eight months, we still haven't got a truck. And due to things being backordered and maybe could get it in the spring, but not sure.
Why is that?
Uh, COVID, I mean, everything's kind of backed up still with, with COVID. Uh, and now, we do have some good news, we did check with a company. That could, could, could possibly have us a truck here in February or March. That would be the, the number that we budgeted, okay? Now, that's, that's, that's what they say. But what I wanted to do, since we waited so long, is just possibly explore some options that, that we have. So. So not only have we had a tough time trying to get a truck. We went through several employees on the back of the garbage truck. I mean, obviously, it's not a light, light of the best city job in the world, so I think.
Is it the cows in the truck?
No, well, it's hard work.
I know it's hard work.
Yeah, no, it's not because of the truck.
It's not directly related.
Right, that's right, so, uh, and, I mean, you know, I, I think anybody out in the field of hiring and HR. Knows that it's, it's a tough task right now trying to find qualified employees that will do you a super job. And we ran into that too, we still have some openings on the, on the street department. So with that in mind, I thought it might be good just to explore some options. Uh, and. Just a good opportunity for us to take a look at some options, so, uh, I, I option number one. Obviously would be to purchase a garbage truck at a budget number of two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars, okay? If we chose that option, obviously, we'd still have to have two folks on, on the, on the garbage truck. Three, one to drive, two on the back. Uh, and it could be here a week, or it could be here six months, or it could be here a year. Uh, that's, uh, it, it seems like the, um. Being loyal to the job is, is not what we are seeing that still exists, okay? Uh, with, with doing it, will we sometimes? Option two is something that we have, have never done, and that would be to contract out all of our garbage service. Uh, the, we would send out requests for proposals to companies. Uh, we would advertise and signal the Tennessee and Harold Citizen, any company that might want to come in. Uh, and take care of the garbage routes as we would do. I reached out to a company just to get an idea on about what it would cost to, to do that. So, and it came back forty thousand dollars a year. They would run these same routes that we run. Uh, they would give everyone at no additional cost. A garbage can that would have the handle on it and what they call a sidewinder. So you would have trucks that would come in, every resident would get one can. Uh, and they would pick the truck up mechanically. And throw it in the back of the truck, lay the can down, the resident would take the garbage truck, or excuse me, the can back up to the home. Uh, and like most municipalities are doing, that's the option. That would be at a price tag of forty thousand dollars a year for the city. The residents would pay no more money. There would be, we would have a little bit more discussion if that is the route that the board would like to take a look at on commercial garbage. Uh, now, the company that I, I spoke with.
So that, so that price is residential, yes, so that price is our residential only price at this point?
It'd be res-.
It's not residential.
So, so what we said was residential and duplexes, but big housing complexes and things like that. Uh, would be out.
Sure. That's okay, so your, uh.
Yeah, can you push the button, please?
Your commercial, what would they do?
So they would hire an independent, they would hire an independent contractor, Aaron, is what they would do. If, if they wanted to stay on the same route that we were doing. Uh, then they would hire the same company that the city is using.
Couldn't they also provide their own, sir?
Oh, they, they could also always haul their own garbage to the recycling center, sure. So again, recycling center.
Was that total cost forty thousand a year?
Yes.
That sounds, that.
What about residential, I mean, okay.
So residential and commercial?
Uh, I'm, this is just commercial.
So what I am talking about right now is every resident in the city limits of Livingston, there would be no additional cost for garbage. And I want to make sure that I, I, I say this to, the employees that we currently have would still have the job. This would not be laying anybody off. Uh, they would simply go on to the street department, the department that they're in right now. Uh, and I spoke to all of them about it because I didn't want them to see it front page of the paper and, and be upset and discouraged and things like that. And that's why I have asked them to be here tonight, two of them didn't come, I guess they had something else to do. Thank Mr. Dishman, you'll agree that I met with you all and, and explained all of this out. So, so, uh, but I would have been elder to answer your question, this would be for residential's and duplexes. The large apartment complexes would have to have hired them an independent contractor if the board chose to go this route, if. So the small businesses that we have, that we are currently doing, uh, that. They would, they would simply, according to a company that I spoke with. Uh, they would simply hire this independent contractor as well, or any other contractor that they wanted, and they would pay them individually. This would put us out of the garbage business.
So what is it due to our budget?
Well, uh. We have a budget right now of, of two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars budgeted for a new truck right now. Our maintenance, and I was just talking to our chief mechanic, Patrick Mountain, and with our sanitation supervisor, Wayne Pete. Uh, it's, it, we could spend on a truck after, let's say, the warranty is out anywhere. From five thousand to forty thousand dollars a year maintenance cost on a garbage truck. Period. It costs us about a hundred and two thousand dollars a year in salaries to run the garbage truck.
What about the fuel?
I do not add up the fuel, but, I mean, Wayne, how often do you can?
I feel like that correctly, once to twice a day, depending on the route, and we're talking about a tank, tank and a half a day.
So you're talking three or four hundred dollars every time, I, I didn't add that up, it's a good question, but that, that's why I wanted them to come.
So forty thousand dollars a year is what the city would pay this garbage service to do the residential and duplexes?
Correct.
That just sounds.
No brainer.
Really cheap, isn't it? That is, sounds really cheap, I mean, we'd save a ton of money if I go on that route, just out of fuel and maintenance costs. Say nothing, I'm not having to buy a garbage truck.
Well, the, the, the numbers was very interesting to me, and when I met with this company, and again. We would have to send out requests for proposals, we couldn't just hire anyone, uh, so. But other companies a lot would come in and then the board would make the final decision on which would be the best option. And, and with, and with the option to, um, uh, decline, if that's what they, if that's what they so wanted to do. So, I'm sorry, go ahead, Dr. Mair, Dotson.
Just a question, on that estimate, is that just a one-year teaser type estimate, or is that multi-years locked in, or did you, did you, did you get that part?
So the company explained to me, I did ask that question, that's a great question, Dr. Mair Dotson, it, uh, they, the, the particular company that I spoke with. Uh, would want a five-year contract, and we would lock in it.
That's insane.
Wayne, what do you think about it?
It's awful cheap, but I.
That's really insane.
I don't see how they can do it, but I say how they can do it, I don't know.
It's not a month, not years.
Hell, aren't we?
How many gallons did you truck, oh?
It's twenty yard to factor, but.
No, uh.
Fuel, fuel.
Fuel.
Fuel, I'd say probably about a hundred and twenty gallon tank, that would.
So you talked to two hundred and fifty gallon of that truck?
No, I don't think it's that big a thing. Yeah, I think it's, uh.
Hold on, just, I can tell you a little bit. I can tell you that it is a, uh. Now, I can't, I said I could, it's, uh, believe the, it does not give the gallons of, of the tank. Twenty yard capacity.
That's roughly eight hundred dollars a day in fuel. Times. We need. That's seventeen thousand dollars a month, this is fuel.
That's right.
You got a number crunching, and bring it back to us and see what the numbers look like, but it sounds like it's, it's really no brainer.
So, so we, so another option, I, I don't want to just get you hung up on that, I, I, I was just like you all. When these numbers came in, I thought, wow. And the reason that I had a work session tonight is because I've got a truck on hold. Uh, and I, I asked him if he would hold this for us until I got through with the meeting. He said, yes, and when I said truck, it's a backhaul, and it gets, the truck is two hundred and, uh. Truck's two hundred and thirty thousand, something like that.
Have you talked to other cities about it?
I, I, I have, so the company that, uh, the truck that is on hold is about two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
That's news, a new truck.
No, that's brand new.
Okay.
That's brand new. That's brand new, and, uh, but I'm, I'm, it may use just a little less fuel, but not much, it still takes two, uh, folks, or three, to operate the truck.
So not to get hung up on this rental thing, but was that just one company that you talked to?
Yes, sir, I just talked to one company, yes, sir, and, and what?
Are they known, or, I mean?
They're very known, and they do, they do several cities, and several cities that you know. Option three, uh, and I, I can go back to that, and we can have more discussion. Uh, option three is, uh, and, and I know a lot of folks that says, well, why don't we have our own truck? Uh, that has the automatic handles it throws in the back, and, uh, let me explain this to you. So for three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars, we can get a truck, okay?
Got it.
Three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven. Uh, and, and then we would turn right around and purchase carts for every resident in Livingston for a hundred and ninety-two thousand and five hundred dollars. For a grand total of five hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars. That's why we don't have those truck, that truck and carts in Livingston. Now, going back to, uh, to option one, is standard, is what we've always done. There is an opportunity, uh, to, uh, keep control of our garbage. Uh, you know, we control it, we own the truck, we take care of the holidays, and, and which is, uh, that, that, that other company would do the same. Uh, option two is when you lease out, you lose some control, unless there's not, uh, things that is in writing in the contract. Uh, but speaking with this company, and we talked about holidays, they didn't have any problem with renting on holidays. Uh, if, if a resident wants an additional can, it will cost them. So if you, if, if you have a lot of garbage at your resident and you need two cans, then you will deal directly with that company and not the city. The city would be completely out of the garbage business. They would take care of all city properties. Uh, we had a discussion about how many events we have on the square, how many festivals that we have, that'd be part of it.
And that's included in that estimate as well?
That's correct.
So would, uh, would the, would the residents then be paying a fee to this company?
No, sir.
They, they continue to pay their, that's included in their.
The, the resident, let me be clear now, the, the resident would not pay anything other than their property taxes as they're paying right now. The only time they would pay money to the company is if you wanted an additional can.
I'd like to hear from cities that have this service.
Okay.
And recommendations from these cities to see whether we go forward, but this is a no brainer.
I, I agree, I don't know why we didn't want to get out of the garbage business, you mentioned there's trouble keeping people wanting to do that particular job, it's hard, it's, uh, smelling.
Dangerous.
Uh.
And there is things, we've got a couple.
And there's nothing wrong, I mean, you know, there's a lot of businesses that outsource things that we used to do.
That's correct.
We do it all the time, by the time.
And, and with the, and, and we are just not in a great, uh, position financially in the general fund. That we can go out and get our own truck at five hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Even if we were.
Yeah, right.
Do we?
Right, so that, that's where we are, uh, that is a verbal, uh, that they, that they gave us. Uh, when we sent out the, uh, request for proposals. That's when I, we did approve number, and, and the company that I spoke with are having budgeting, uh, meetings tonight, and that's why we're not here. And I, I don't want to mention the name.
Would, would there be any need to keep the existing truck that we have, I know it's probably on its last leg anyway? Or would we sell it and try to get money back out of it, or what would be?
So, so right now, we have three trucks. And, and their even is up in maintenance right now. They, if you remember, we ordered nearly two years ago, because we knew that the life has come and gone on, on the garbage truck, and how long have they had, Wayne?
Well, they're, they're old seven months.
Okay, they're old seven months, and we've got, uh, we're about to, again, our, our maintenance bill, folks can go. On a, on, on a very, very good year, five to ten thousand dollars. On an average year realistically, fifteen to twenty-five, on a bad year, forty plus. And we're looking at a couple of forty pluses right now, right now.
Yeah, I spent over ten thousand dollars on the maintenance last week.
I, I think we should proceed at all pace to get out bids and find out, uh, any unknown details or whatever.
Yeah.
I agree with Bruce, this sounds like a very easy decision, i- if this is even close to.
I agree, yeah, I agree, and, and the actual numbers, I want to see them put it on paper, whatever company that comes in, who, that. Uh, whatever company comes in, uh, and see them, uh, with the, the numbers, and like I said. We always have the right to decline the proposals, if the numbers come in and they're nowhere near what they told me, then we can simply decline. Under no obligation, and we go back to the standardized way that we do it.
How many small businesses that the city currently serves would be affected by having to then buy their own service?
We, uh, have roughly about a hundred. The, uh, the, the, the total, and this is something that if we stay the route that we're going. I'll be coming to you for an increase for businesses, any industrial for more, uh, for additional fees. Uh, the October invoice that will be, uh, given out to nearly a hundred, uh. Commercial type, uh, deal is twenty-five hundred and twenty dollars.
Do what?
We are only receiving twenty-five hundred and twenty dollars fees.
You need to go bonus tomorrow. I wouldn't wait about it.
Well, I wanted to see where we're, where we're at.
And that is, my body's almost too good to be.
I mean, that.
I've got fear.
They don't even cover the fuel alone, the labor.
Yeah.
I'd send out a notice, Carson, I'm going up on you guys.
We just need to get this on the next.
David, I know, I know that you just got here, I'll give you the clip now first, if you don't mind. Uh, so what we are discussing here is garbage, uh, garbage in general, uh. The, uh, we ordered a truck twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty, twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one budget year, and we haven't got a truck yet. So a year, eight months later, we're still here. Uh, we do, we have, uh, Wayne has found another company, and, uh, if we wanted to, we could, we think we could get one February, March, is that right?
That's what he said.
Yes, that's what he says. Uh, but, uh, at a budget number that we have got two hundred and forty-five thousand off, we budgeted two forty-five, I think, two fifteen or something like that, I think. Uh, but while we was waiting, I, I, I started looking at other options and often, one of the options was. Uh, and I had talked to them about this, is contracting out the garbage. It would put the city of Livingston out of the garbage business altogether. No employee would lose their job, they'd simply be transferred over to the, uh, street department.
Unless you want to.
Yeah, uh, and, uh, with the, with.
On the back.
With the maintenance that we are doing on these garbage trucks, with the fuel that we're doing with these garbage trucks, you're on the road every day, you know what the fuel cost is. Uh, uh, I thought it might be time just to look at it, and the company that I verbally talked to that came to Livingston and seen me. Uh, quoted me verbally a price of forty thousand dollars a year, and for forty thou-
To pick up the garbage city of Livingston, forty thousand dollars a year?
Yes, sir.
They can't do it. I don't even pay the help on the back, and, I mean, I'm gonna be honest with you, these good things sound good, but when this day blows up, the first thing we'll do. We'll run our own trucks to the auction, or we'll have a fundraiser, not have a truck, or this will blow up, and then we'll be hauling pickups and everything else. I don't care who they are, they can't pick it up for a thousand dollars.
So the, the, the thing of it is, we would send out requests for proposals. They would actually put it in writing, and they would be bound to a contract with the city of Livingston. And if not, uh, then I guess we'd turn it over to our attorney, but, uh, again, I'm just telling you verbally what they have said. Now verbally what someone says and what they put in writing, it may be two totally separate numbers. But my question was to everyone here, is it worth looking into, or do we just want to buy the traditional truck? As we always has, just some options that I wanted the board to know about.
Well, we're not obligated if you do.
Not, no, no obligation, we're not obligated right now to anybody. The truck that might be here in six months is canceling gone. And we had, we, I had to make a decision on that, because if I didn't cancel it before the end of September, October. Uh, there was a five, six thousand dollar charge on the plane, is that what you?
That's what they were saying, but, I mean, it was their fault, they didn't build a truck, so it's a legal charges.
Yeah, but that's, that's what they said. So, uh, I can certainly get.
What, what are we gonna do with our own trucks?
Well, um, we haven't got that far yet, so, uh, I, I would, I would think that, uh. Obviously not a thing until, uh, we get proposals, we're gonna continue on and carry garbage the way that we have. If you all decide that to go with a private contractor, then we would, uh, sell, uh, we got three. Uh, we'd probably keep one, I don't even know why we would probably keep one, I talked to Wayne about that. Uh, but, uh, probably for junk or whatever, but, uh, but, uh, but we'd run it, probably put it on the deals.
It's supposed to, this company does this service for other.
Other cities.
Cities that use our truck.
That's right.
That's what we're all saying, David.
I might earn that thirty-five hundred dollars more, she got to.
Yeah. There ain't no way.
Well, we, we.
Let's see it writing.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
And also, I, I mean, obviously, we get references from their clients.
Absolutely. And with, with the, with the customers that, that we've got, I, I would simply, uh, call the cities that they're representing and, and get a letter from them and. Certainly supply you all that, and then when we got the request for proposals, obviously, they'd be sitting there in front of you all, and you can see the real numbers.
Well, I would just say, even if that forty a year is a pipe dream, and it's fifty percent more than that. Or a hundred percent more than that, it still makes sense to outsource that, because the, what you're talking about, the cost of fuel that we're paying. The maintenance after the trucks are out of warranty.
Absolutely, absolutely.
We're probably spending more than a hundred thousand a year.
Over maintenance, no question.
That would, that would embarrass you.
Yeah, I mean, if, like, like I said, salaries, we're at a hundred and two thousand dollars.
But that's probably gonna go away.
Yeah, no.
That wouldn't go away.
This only won't go up.
Yeah, well, the salaries, because we're not, we're not.
I understand, unless, unless people move on and you choose that to replace.
And, and Wayne's got a couple of positions open right now, now, once he got full, we just simply wouldn't hire back, you know, the attrition would, we'd lose, right? Uh, but, but now, make no mistake, you would save money on the maintenance of the garbage truck.
And the fuel, and the cost of the truck.
And the cost, absolutely, so, but again, do, do, is this something that we, and, and this is not a voting meeting. Uh, this is just a work session to discuss, but, I mean, uh, is this something we think that?
Pursue the.
Yeah, I agree.
No further questions, uh, and do you have any questions for me?
Well, I think even that, you said the guy was holding the truck that was for two fifteen for a bit, but it's still. Four to six months away anyway, obviously, that's not the only fish in the sea, there's gonna be more if this all blows up and it's like, okay, it's gonna be.
Right.
You know, five times what we told you. There's trucks out there.
Yeah.
So in the meantime, city garbage is still running, we've got that voice around, we've got.
Yeah, the, the garbage, yeah, the garbage is running.
Well, you check in seeing what it costs to refurbish one of our trucks. And, and go back to the manufacturer and have them to do it.
Yeah. I don't know that, I, I will check, David, I should tell you they do that, Wayne, can you hit that?
I'm sure they're putting a ban on it, I mean, you still have your own test.
I'm sure somebody do it, 'cause when, when we trade these trucks in, or cities trade them in, I mean, they don't run them through this proper. They pass it on to the next man, so they're not a good place that hasn't worked on.
I can check that, sure, sure can.
I talked to a jester today, um, some different things, and he said, especially you larger stuff, he, he mentioned ambulances and fire trucks and that type of thing, he said that they couldn't get them up, you know, couldn't get them in this and that, and said that those refurbishing twenty-year-old trucks.
Wow. That's something to look into, I'm, I'm not, I'm not opposed to looking into, I'll break back to them. Uh, we'll call the company.
It might be too much or whatever.
Well, but it, I, I think it's option, but we can look at it.
So you're gonna get proposals, and we're gonna have another work session?
Uh, well, what I'm gonna do, uh, I, I, I don't, respectfully, Bill, I don't know if we need another work session, I think we send down four proposals, and we sit down here at the table, and, we go through the proposals, and, uh, if we like it, we go with it, if we don't, we don't. We get back on the, uh, list of by truck. David, what I also told her was to, to, uh, I, I hear a lot of folks say that we should, have our own, uh, garbage truck that has the mechanical arm that does that, so I looked into that, it's three hundred, and, uh, twenty-five thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars for the truck, a hundred ninety-two thousand and five hundred dollars for the carts that we would need in Livingston for a total of five hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars. So I just, I just wanted to, in case somebody questioned you on that.
Well, I think if we, if we get the proposals, and if you, you were wanting to look into, uh, like David said, if refurbishing is a possibility and how much it would cost, I don't think we need another work session, we can discuss that.
Yeah, I agree.
Bring me.
Right. Yeah, and, uh, but, uh, I will get the proposals out, we'll let the, uh, folks that want to, uh, take a look at it, write it down in writing, exactly, and Wayne will, and I, uh, because we know what garbage routes are running, and how we run it, what days we run it, and how we expect it to be, and so, we, you know, go from there, now, and, and one of the things that, uh, uh, a pro or con, however you wanna say it, uh, if you give up the rights, now, for example, with Ken Dodson, don't put his garbage out on Tuesday like he's supposed to, then it would probably next Tuesday before you get down. Now, we could easily call Mr. Dishman there that drives a garbage truck and says, run up Ken Dodson, get his garbage truck, we gotta put it out.
Does that happen a lot?
Yes, yes, yes.
Really?
You go by, and they won't have their garbage out, and they'll call back and say, you passed your study.
Yes.
I, I didn't, I didn't know that was even a possibility, I just, I just take it to the landfill myself when I forget.
Well, it, it, it does, it does happen.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, people will learn.
Well, you'll know what day you put your garbage out, or it'll be next week.
Well, uh, in other properties I've had where they have the, and you're just out of luck, you forget, so do you.
Exactly, exactly. Okay, yeah, if, if, is there any, any question, yes, go ahead, David.
Do you think that will be on this coming month's agenda? If not, the reason why I say, I think we need to look at commercial, that just blows by my mind.
Yeah, well, I, 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 what I plan on doing is getting proposals out and advertising for bid. Uh, it would be a goldmine to have it on the November agenda at the next city council meeting, if I can get it done that fast. If not, we can always have a call meeting mid-November or something.
I, I missed it, how much did you say that's paying now? The commercials?
Twenty-five hundred, twenty dollars a month or something, doesn't that what it was?
Yeah.
For the hundred?
For a hundred.
So it's paying twenty-five dollars each?
Right.
They don't remember the fuel.
No.
Right.
So, six dollars a week.
And, and that, and, and David.
That don't work.
And David, what I said, if we go back to the traditional way that we've done garbage, that price will go, uh, there's no question about that.
It'll have to.
Yeah, exactly, so, uh, any other questions? Okay, we're adjourned, folks, thank you.